Good morning. We're going to get started with our invocation and pledge. Our invocation will be led this morning by Mickey Reeves, volunteer chaplain for the Oklahoma City Police Department, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Jocelyn Crete of Girl Scouts Troop 410. Please stand. Please bow your heads. Almighty and eternal God, we give you great thanks for your glory and for your mercy. Thank you on behalf of all of us gathered here today for your abundant blessings. We also thank you for our health and for life itself. As we fulfill our callings for friendship and sustenance, we give you thanks for the ability to be involved in useful work for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you also for the freedom to embrace you or for the freedom to choose otherwise. We thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. It is in Scripture that you have told us that citizens should obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote order, justice, and peace. My prayer is for our mayor, for the various levels of officials of our city, and in particular for this assembled council. I pray that through your infinite grace that you grant them the wisdom to govern any conflict and issues of our time, a genuine desire for the welfare and true needs of all citizens, the keen thirst for justice and rightness, the abundant confidence in what is good and fitting, the respect and ability to work together in harmony even when times present honest disagreements. I lift all these prayers and petitions to you and pray that your blessings will be upon everyone here. We ask this in your holy and precious name. Amen.
Will you please all join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Deacon Reeves and Jocelyn. All right, I call this meeting of the City Council to order, and we first have an item 3A from Office of the Mayor. That's the appointment of three folks to the Board of Appeals Building Code. You can take a motion on that. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. What's that? Who are we missing? Oh, how do you wish to vote? Councilwoman Nice? Passed unanimously. All right, item four is items from council. There are none today. Item five are the city manager reports. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two reports on. One is the claims and payroll that's always on. We also have our December sales and use tax check. Really strong sales tax again in December at 12%. Overall, we're $14 million ahead of target and about 9.7% growth for the year. Use tax continues to be very strong at about 9% growth and for this month and about 13% overall. Combined sales and use tax are about $16 million above target, so just continuing very strong. We do have the caution that we have from our economists that to expect it slowing later in the year, but right now it's still continuing very strong with our sales tax growth. So we'll continue to monitor and keep you up to date on that. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Item six are the Journal of Council Proceedings. We have items A and B we could take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item seven, request for uncontested continuances. Mr. City Manager?
We have several on today, beginning on item 11P1 on page 12, unsecured structures. All of these will be stricken from the agenda. Item B, 6600 Braniff Drive, the owner has secured. Item E, 1901 North Woodward Avenue, the owner has secured. Item I, 1420 Southwest 15th Place, the owner has secured. Item J, 1044 Southwest 25th Street, to re-notify for additional structures. Item K, 1120 Southwest 30th Street, to re-notify for additional structures. Item L, 2732 Southeast 48th Street, the owner has secured. And item M, 1108 Southwest 50th Street, the owner has secured. Continuing on page 12 on item 11Q1, unsecured structures, all of these are also stricken from the agenda. Item A, 6600 Braniff Drive. Item B, 1901 North Woodward Avenue. Item E, 1420 Southwest 15th Place. And item F, 1108 Southwest 50th Street. That's all the items that I have.
All right. Item eight, revocable permits and events. There are none today, so we will recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, and I believe we do have a brief presentation for item B.
Yes, sir. Angela Pierce, Assistant Finance Director, will make a quick presentation here on the MFA financials. You see many financials that come through for the public trust, and typically we just receive those. That's all that's required because those have been reviewed by the other boards, the trust itself, their board. With MFA and PPA, both of those, since the council sits as the board, we have those presented here at council.
All right, good morning. Angela Pierce, Assistant Finance Director. Today's the culmination of the end of a fiscal year and a lot of hard work. I'm proud to be presenting to you today the Fiscal Year 2022 Year-In Financial Report for MFA. But before I do that, if I may, I'd like to take a moment and introduce you to our accounting services staff led by Alex Fedak. If everyone could stand for me, please. There is a tremendous amount of work that goes into preparing these statements for you, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce our financial stewards. These are the crew that bring you timely and accurate financial statements every year. So, thank you so much. Now, by the end of the council meeting today, I'm going to be presenting three different financial reports to you, the specific ones just for MFA. But I did want to let you know that the group behind me has prepared 12 annual financial reports, and those are all out on the website already should you choose to look at any of those. I did also want to point out that we have already met with the Audit Committee members of City Council prior to today's council meeting to go over the results of these financial statements. The biggest highlight that I have for you today is that we've received an unqualified opinion and that we get to remain our status as a low-risk auditee. One of the biggest challenges that we faced this year was the implementation of a new GASB standard. This is GASB 87, which has changed the way we've reported leases. I would like to take a moment to recognize our assistant controller, Kristi Jameson. If she could stand just for one moment. Kristi has become our resident expert on all things leases. She has been tremendous asset in the implementation of this GASB standard, and we want to thank Kristi for all of the time and work she's put in to getting us to the finish line. So, thank you, Kristi. This GASB pronouncement was intended to improve reporting on leases by creating a single model for the accounting and disclosure of lease-related information. I think the main highlight for you today is that this did not create a material impact for any of the trusts or the city financial reports. So, in MFA, as you know, this holds most of our insurance programs along with our workers' compensation fund, our IT contracts, and advanced architecture and engineering for our geo bond program. The MFA's net position increased this year by $300,000. And what this means is that charges for services were larger than the cost of those services. The ending net position was $44.1 million. And if you'd like any more detail, the first place I would direct you is the, what we call the MDNA section, which is the Management Discussion and Analysis section, and that begins on page seven of the financial statements for MFA. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about your MFA annual financial statements.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you so much. Stand to your team. All right, that's the only presentation on the MFA docket. We could adopt all the items A through G with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. So now we'll adjourn OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority where we have items A through C, and we again have another presentation for item B.
Yes, Angela Pierce, Assistant Finance Director, will present this financial statement as well.
Yes, thank you for having me. So now I'm going to move on to PPA, which is your Public Property Authority. So, housed in PPA is our operations for all five of our municipal golf courses, our fairgrounds, convention center, and many of our other municipal buildings. We also have in the PPA our six business improvement districts, which are listed there on the slide for you. The overall net position for PPA increased by almost $11 million for a total net position of $73.3 million. We attribute this increase to an increase in demand for events and event-related revenue post-COVID. Our golf fund specifically has seen an increase of 1.5 million. There has been an increased demand for golf since the onset of the pandemic, but I would like to note that we are starting to see just a bit of a slowdown in this area. Our fairgrounds net position remained relatively flat compared to prior years with a negative net position of $22.6 million. At first glance, a negative net position might sound like a terribly bad thing, but I do want to let you know that a negative net position is to be expected for the fairgrounds. The reason for that is there's no operating revenue in the fund, and we own those assets and depreciate them fully. And with that, I'll take any questions related to your Public Property Authority financial statements.
Thank you. All right, so we can take items A through C under the PPA docket with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, we'll adjourn OC PPA and reconvene as the council. We're at page two of your printed agenda, item nine, the Consent Docket. There are scheduled presentations for AY, AZ, and BA. Are there any other items that any council member wishes to pull out for separate discussion or vote? Hearing none, a resident has signed up to speak. Joy Reardon wishes to address the introduction of the planning cases.
Morning, City Council. Happy New Years to everybody. What, it's the same thing as I keep saying. The more we build out, the more we approve these changes and everything, it's actually making it worse on what finite resources we have, whether it's police, EMS, fire, and everything else. And we saw several incidences on, over the weekend that proved the point. We can't keep building developments out when we're losing what we've got coming in. Our inner city is dying. But if we keep approving these developments going out, that's pulling resources that we don't have right now for these developments. What's going to end up happening is, and I've seen it in other states, y'all are going to start, I happen to have volunteers for the police department, fire department, and EMS to cover these areas. And quite frankly, we're losing farmland, and when we lose farmland, we don't feed the public. Every time we develop these further out, we lose all this farmland. We're losing finite resources, which means we don't have a whole bunch of resources as it is within the city. We can't get enough police officers on the street. We can't get enough firefighters to cover shifts. In EMS, the runtimes are getting more and more timed in between when fire department and police department are calling for, or general citizens are calling for the, for EMS and stuff like that, they can't cover a lot of these calls. They're bringing in people from, that's the reason why we've got the private EMS right now.
30 seconds remaining.
So that's something that y'all should really think about. And I'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have a question?
Mayor?
Yes?
Excuse me for interruption. And I apologize. On item AD, I did want to pull that out and discuss that if you don't mind.
Okay. Well, we can start there then. Councilwoman?
Thank you very much. I do, I know we're talking about the designation of the neighborhood that is known as Martin Luther King Jr. for our Strong Neighborhood Initiative area. So I would like for, to hear more about this neighborhood initiative and also some questions about where we are with our current neighborhood that is going to be phased out as far as our neighborhood initiative areas are concerned.
Okay. I'm Shannon Enson, Program Planner with the Planning Department. Good to see you guys. Happy New Year. First of all, thank you for a good question. I'm glad you brought this up. We do want to talk about Strong Neighborhood Initiative, and this is an important day because hopefully you will accept the recommendation from our selection committee. Councilwoman Carter served on the selection committee for SNI. We had several other community members who served on that selection committee, and we have several planning staff that I want to thank for putting that together. We start the process in May for the data collection and all the analysis, and we start meeting with the selection committee in August, so it takes us several months to get to that point. Once we get to that point, we have, the selection committee meets and we go through, and they make a recommendation on which neighborhoods to invite to be an SNI neighborhood. We invited 11 neighborhoods, and we had six apply. And that was, we went through an interview, and we went through an interview process in November, on November 30th, and the selection committee interviewed all the neighborhoods and heard from them and talked about pros and cons of being an SNI neighborhood, and it was a great discussion. So, that's the recommendation today. The current neighborhoods that we have right now are Metro Park. They're only in their third year of SNI, so we're not ready to graduate them just yet. They still have a couple more years. This is a five-year commitment. And so, we also have Capitol Hill neighborhood. They are in their fifth year. However, the selection committee and staff agreed that we would like to recommend that we extend them for two more years. There are several indicators that we look at when we're looking at selection of neighborhoods, and they're just not quite there yet. We did the same thing with Culberson's East Highland a few years ago and extended them another couple of years. So, and the reason they're not quite to that threshold yet is because it's partially our fault in terms of, from the city's perspective. We have language barriers. We have some other barriers in the neighborhood. There were some policies within some of our programming that was misunderstood, that you have to be a citizen to apply for some things. That is not the case, and as you know, in Capitol Hill, we have a lot of majority Hispanic families there. And so, we have learned now that that is not the case with HUD, and so they can apply. So we want to make sure that we are giving everyone equal opportunity to apply for these programs. Capital View is our third neighborhood we're working in now in Ward 7, and they have done a fantastic job of participation. Of all the SNI neighborhoods that we've worked with, this is the most, this is the neighborhood who's had the highest neighborhood participation of any neighborhood as far as individuals that live in the neighborhoods. So, they've had more than 35 homes rehabbed, which is more than any other neighborhood. We are on our, I think, ninth home that's under construction in that neighborhood. They've planted a lot of trees. They've had almost 200 hazardous trees removed. And so, from an individual kind of neighborhood by neighbor, neighbor by neighbor count, they've had a very high level of participation. The one thing that we are missing so far that we have ARPA funds set aside for is a park. And so, thankfully, you all approved to have a $2 million set aside for a park in Capital View, and staff is still working on a selection of a site and the purchase of a site for that park. Even if Capital View, we do plan for them to graduate in May or in June, if they do graduate, we will, we are still committed to building that park if we can find a site in that neighborhood, no doubt about it. But they have met all the, you know, criteria in terms of being able to graduate. And so that is, hopefully answers your question, Councilwoman. I'm happy to answer more of them.
Well, that was the majority of it. I just wanted to ensure, and you say that publicly about those funds that will be committed to Capital View, and I think it's important to also note for the difficulty of us being able to do a lot of things in Capital View because of it also being placed in the Capitol Medical Zoning area as far as the commission having that oversight, whereas, yes, we could build, build homes, but they were still a historic preservation piece to this neighborhood in some ways and aspects. There were also clearly some concerns as far as the neighbors getting on board, as far as the transparency of being told and understand that, yes, this, we are, as a city, committed to helping this neighborhood. So, I do want to make sure that is referenced, and as far as we look at the investment, and while I understand we're talking about how great the neighborhood is, as I looked at the numbers for investment as far as public dollars compared to our other neighborhoods that are currently active, this neighborhood in particular did not have that same type of investment. As far as the millions, they were less than 10 compared to our other couple of neighborhoods who were well over that threshold in the double digits. So there are still some, some concerns and some inequities that I do hope that we are able to oversee and maintain as far as our new neighborhoods that are coming on board, especially in some of our dire communities that have been under-invested for quite some time. So I will also be committed to helping in that process with just some help with some, some different folks that are helping and planning and other things that I have access to. So, very committed to making sure as far as how that, that works, that we're doing what we need to do. But I appreciate that, and I thank you, and I am very excited to see what can become of Martin Luther King Jr. for this SNI.
Thank you. Yeah, there, by the way, I just want to mention too, the selection process, the interview process, the final scoring that took place with the six applicants was so close, and the interview really did make a difference because the selection committee was able to hear just how much, how developed the neighborhood associations are to see their capacity to be able to participate in SNI fully. So, that's what it came down to, and so, we're very excited to have Martin Luther King Jr. Neighborhood join our SNI family. It's kind of like seeing our family grow, so it's exciting for staff. But we're also sad always to see a neighborhood like Capital View. We hate saying goodbye to neighborhoods, even though we stay in touch. Thank you.
Well, and I'll just mention, you know, just gratitude to extending Capitol Hill's participation so that they can really take full advantage of everything and make sure that we are, like you had mentioned, just being as equitable as possible and making sure folks are, know the opportunities they have, can access, and continue that work. And I know the pandemic kind of also probably halted a lot of things. I know with the plaza and just a lot of that. So, yeah, I'm excited that they'll get a little extra time and just look forward to all the great work you all do in those neighborhoods. So, appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll start working with them next, or this month to work on that. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a scheduled presentation for item nine, AY.
So, AY is an ordinance making changes to one of the TIF districts of the project area, and Joanna McSpadden with our Economic Development Group is going to provide presentation on this, on the changes that are proposed.
Good morning. Joanna McSpadden with the Finance Department. I'm going to walk you through a few slides to explain sort of what this proposed amendment is doing to the project plan. On this first slide, the one thing I wanted to point out that we have been through a couple of other review committees in the process, so we had our TIF Review Committee meeting on November 30th. That's the group with the other taxing jurisdictions, and they recommended approval of the, of the proposed plan amendment. We also appeared at the Planning Commission on December 8th. They reviewed it for conformance with the comprehensive plan and also recommended approval. So now we are here for the introduction. We'll get the presentation, and then two weeks from now, you'll have your final hearing on the ordinance, and then we'll present it to the trust as kind of an informational item because they're the ones tasked with carrying out and implementing the plan. So, the first change that we'll discuss is the budget amendment. So, you'll see on the left side of the table is the current budget, 28.2 million. We are kind of collapsing a few of the categories. We're eliminating the administration contingency categories. Those are not needed for a budget component for these project plans, so this is just kind of lessons learned over the years. And then we are adding the assistance and development financing, which is kind of the catch-all budget category that we use for project assistance outside of like infrastructure improvements and things. So, the proposed amendment there nets out to be an increase of 6 million, and then you can see our new proposed budget is 34.2 million. We've expended a little over 13 million already, and so we'll have a proposed budget available of 20.8 million, and then just below that, the section kind of shows you what our expected cash flow is. So we've got 4.6 in the fund now. We're expecting a little over 15 million over the next few years, so we'll have just under 20 million in cash to use against that 20.8 million budget. So we'll have a little bit of cushion if things come in higher than expected. So, here's the, the map of the area to orient yourself. So, the blue shaded in section is the footprint of the Dell campus, and so that's TIF 5. That is the sales tax component of this project plan. The red hash line is the TIF 4 footprint, which is the ad valorem component to the project plan and is also the current project area. If you guys will remember, the increment area is where we collect the tax. The project area is where we can expend the tax. And so what we're proposing with this plan amendment is an expansion of the project area. So we're not proposing any changes to the increment area where those taxes are generated. We're proposing expansion of the project area where we can spend those funds. So the areas in green that are kind of the street view that are outlined in the red dash, that's the proposed expansion area for the projects, for the project area. The next slides I'll go through are, kind of demonstrate just sort of some of the characteristics of that proposed expansion area. So one of the things we looked at were what commercial and industrial areas do we have? And you can see that it's pretty heavy on the far west side and then the area by Meridian, and then we've got some sporadic areas there near the stockyards where we could do some improvements or investments in those commercial and industrial areas. The next slide shows the taxable market value, and so one of the things that we look at, and just to give you an idea, planning, the planning department helped me build these maps, and so they sort of were instrumental in helping us sort of determine some maps, and so, they sort of were instrumental in helping us sort of determine some of these factors that were important to look at. We excluded the outlet mall, just to kind of, it was an outlier, so we wanted to show what the growth rate was without outlet mall. And you can kind of see, we've got some decline in some areas, there is some increases on the, the eastern portion, but I will let you know that the growth rate in real estate over that same period for the rest of the city was about 30%. And so, this, these growth rates are pretty minimal compared to that, so we do have some stagnant growth in the areas that we're targeting. The next slide gives you an idea of the activity in the area. We've got a few, a few sales that, that happened, some, some new structures built since 2018. I will let you know the far, far west area that's over by the outlet mall that does show some activity. That was actually a dissolution of a trust, and so, those transactions were not real sales, they were, you know, kind of separating out to the partners. So, the next slide gives you an idea of the age of the structures in the areas that we're looking at. So, we're, we're looking at structures that are 60 to 40 years old on the two western portions, and then, of course, even older over in the stockyards area. So, some, possibly some needs for improvement in those facilities. And then, the last slide we've got shows some of the planned projects for our Public Works Department with the idea that perhaps some of this TIF funding could be used to help expand those projects or do a little bit more so on the infrastructure side. We could, we could look at doing some of that to support new growth. And that's my last slide. I'd be happy to answer questions.
I don't have any questions right now. I know I've been part of conversations regarding this and the Stockyards Master Plan that the Planning Department along with Alliance put together a few years ago. I know this will kind of help aid in that implementation and attracting, like you mentioned, for the commercial corridor in particular around Stockyards is kind of my main focus. And, you know, one thing I know, speaking with residents in that area, that has been a, a great need and that, you know, I'd really love to see us pursue is attracting a full-service grocery to that commercial corridor. So, I'm, I'm interested in the potential of this as a tool to assist with that, because right now, really, the only option for folks that live in that, in the residential area around the commercial is a Family Dollar that I believe is right off of Penn, no, no, off of Agnew, and, and then farther south on Penn, but as far as transit access, I know I've spoken with folks that live in Will Rogers Courts, and there's just really not a lot of great transit access to nearby, near-ish by, I should say, grocery options, so something within walking or, you know, sort of cycling distance, especially for those residents that have been there for a long time and have, I spoke with one gentleman in particular who takes the bus to downtown and then up to Northwest 23rd and Penn to the Walmart, because that just feels like the easiest, closest option using the, using the bus. So, I'm interested at the potential of, of what this kind of expansion might be able to help specifically with that need for, for those folks that have, that are living in the area and then, you know, make it a, just, yeah, a, a more robust commercial corridor as well. So, thank you.
Sure.
Joanna, we, we kind of discussed that same situation going west from there as well for the, for the properties, going further west out there and having access to grocery and necessities on a daily basis. So, we look forward to hoping, as Councilmember Hammond suggested, that this will facilitate some of that, so thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, Joanna.
Thank you.
All right, now, item A Z.
Yes, this is the city's annual comprehensive financial report, and Angela Pierce will make presentation on this. Again, this combines all of the financials related to the city, and I'll let her give the overview of the results.
Yes, good morning. Angela Pierce, Assistant Finance Director. So, with this presentation, I'm going to be presenting the city's annual financial reports. We use the, the lingo, the ACFER, to describe this report. I do just want to remind you, as I said in my previous presentation, that we have already met with the Audit Committee to go over the results of these reports. The city's net position increased for the year to end at a total of 2.7 billion. The combination of all of our component units, including most of our trusts, also had positive movement in their net position. Total assets increased by 447 million. This was largely due to our large geo issuance during the year and the increase in sales and use tax receipts. Our fiduciary funds are where the city is the custodian for funds for somebody else. This includes our retirement funds and our OPEB. Total net position decreased by 143 million. This is mainly due to changes in the financial markets where our investments are held. On a positive note, I did want to let you know that our employee retirement fund has a net position of 111%, and our OPEB's net position has increased to 18.8%. Our OPEB net position is a little bit of a slower ship to steer, but thanks to previous action, we expect that as our liability decreases over time, that we'll continue to see positive movement in our, in our plan there. Now, let's talk about fund balance. Our ending fund balance for governmental funds increased to 1.4 billion dollars. I will point out that there's a difference between U.S. GAAP basis and the budgetary basis of fund balance, but both of the categories moved in a positive direction. And thank you for your action earlier this year. You approved, and we were able to move some of our excess fund balance through a budget amendment into a reserve account for capital and operating needs in the future, so thank you for that. My last topic for you today is our single audit report, also known as the A133. This is the audit of all of our federal programs, and as you're all aware, we've had a stark increase in our federal funding we've received through CARES, ARPA, and our ERA legislation. So, the time and complexity of this audit has grown. We expect to have this report ready for you by the end of Q1 of this calendar year, and that timeline will meet the prescribed auditing standards. Once that's completed in the next couple of months, we'll bring that back to council for your review.
I would say too, on that, Angela, that I appreciate the leadership from the Finance Department, working with the staff throughout the city, but we've got an auditor that's reviewing all those expenditures as we're looking at those, those grant expenditures, just because they're new grant funds and new programs, as well as working with our external auditors that actually audit our financials to make sure that we're managing those funds in the best way we can. And so, I appreciate all of that additional effort and understand the additional work this is. But say thank you to the accounting staff, to the leadership in the Finance Department, and really, all of the departments throughout the city. There's different people that participate as we put together the financial statements, and they bring the final documents together. So, really grateful for their work and leadership there, and Alex, for your team, for all that you all do to help, just help us do a good job in reporting financially our, our finances accurately. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. And finally, you have a report scheduled for item B A.
Yes, this is our Public Safety Sales Tax Report. Chris York, our Budget Director, will make this presentation. This is one that we do every year, it's a result of the Journal Entry of Judgment from back in, I think it was 1992, and so, we, every year, the city auditor looks at these, the expenditures out of these funds, there are certain standards, requirements that we have to follow in expending the Public Safety Sales Tax Funds, and so, I'll let Chris just give us an update on the results of that, and then, an issue that we identify that we need to bring to your attention.
Absolutely. Good morning, Christian York, Budget Director with the Finance Department. Craig already set me up quite a bit with some of the background there, so this is part two of our two-part process where we look at the Public Safety Sales Tax. The Journal Entry requires council to adopt a resolution annually on how these tax dollars are going to be spent, and then, staff, after the year closes, brings back the report that's in front of you today to give you an update on how those were actually expensed, and to ensure that we complied with the resolution. Another requirement is that the city auditor's office looks at the report as well and does an audit, and their opinion letter is in your packet today, but I'm happy to say that they found the report to be materially accurate and in compliance with the Journal and Entry, so all good there. I'll just go over a few figures in the report, and as Craig mentioned, a couple of highlights for you. So, starting on the, the first page of the report, in the lower right-hand corner, we have a summary level of revenues and expenditures there for you. We ended the year with the police fund at 34.6 million, so we added about $10 million to fund balance, and closed that fire at 27.6 million, adding just under 5 million. The position chart just below that shows our authorized level positions. Now, for fiscal year 2021, we had an asterisk on this one because it included a number of frozen positions. Those are authorized positions that we didn't have funding for. But council approved in fiscal year 2022 restoration of all those positions, so no asterisk here today. The entire police and fire count of 1,235 police officers, 999 firefighters are all fully funded positions. As we go to the next page, we zoom in on some of those expenses by project. So, on the left side of the page, you'll see a detailed list of all of the current projects that are approved by council and underway, and on the right side, you'll see a pie chart that gives you some sense of how those dollars are spread across the projects. And so, I would just highlight to you a couple of the larger projects. It'll look very similar between police and fire. The biggest project, of course, was for additional police officers at 23.6 million, or nearly 56% of the total expenditure, followed by the increased police officer salaries and benefits project at 10 million point seven. This is what we refer to as the wage adjustment, where the Public Safety Sales Tax is able to help fund some of those salaries and wages regardless of whether the officer is in the sales tax or in the general fund. One highlight here, just for the sake of transparency, we did have one project that exceeded the budget estimate that we provided council back when we did the resolution. And so, the portion of the chart labeled vehicle operations and maintenance ended the year at 2.12 million, but was only budgeted for 1.86 million. So, that discrepancy there was based on additional fuel costs that exceeded our estimate for FY 2022. On the next page, as you look at fire, you'll see a similar spending pattern. We've got additional firefighters and recruits at 59% of the spend, followed by increased firefighter salaries and benefits at 12.5 million or 25%. One call-out here as well, under the project for civilian support programs, we exceeded the resolution estimate of 873,000 by about 105,000. The overspend was related to turnover. We do a pretty good job of position budgeting, but unfortunately, there's some things that are difficult to forecast, and that's when we have, for example, some of our civilian staff turned over during this time period, and they were paid, they were accrued leave payouts as they separated from the city. That's one of those things that's difficult to forecast. So, we did slightly exceed the budget estimate by that 105,000. So, total expenditures in fire at 49.1 million for the year, police 41.9, and that's all the highlights I have for you, but I'd happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
All right, well, that concludes the items we had scheduled presentations for, or that anybody pulled out, so we could adopt the consent docket now. I have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 10 is the concurrence docket. We have items A through M we could take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11, our items requiring separate votes. Item 11A, well, first of all, Joy Reardon has signed up to address them. Joy Waves, okay? So, then, item 11A is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 2904 Northwest 13th Street, going from R1 to C1. Councilwoman Hammond, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you. I know we did receive a letter that came in after, I believe, the Planning Commission met, that did express some concerns and protests, but I don't see anything in the application that prohibits us continuing to work on the, the concerns that were brought in the letter just around traffic, you know, navigating additional traffic to this, this property, so I will move for approval, and we'll just be working with those residents and the applicant to address the concerns.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11B is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 327 Northwest 121st Street, going from R1 to R2. Councilwoman Nice, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Well, I did, I did have a few questions, so I will ask that we, I'm looking at it here. I would rather get my question answered before I move forward, and the applicant without him being here, so I will ask that we just defer this for two weeks, and I'll work to get in contact with the applicant. There's no phone number. There it is. So, I'll work to, work with the applicant and get my question answered, and we'll move from there.
All right, so, it's a motion to defer till our next meeting in two weeks. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item is deferred. 11C is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval at 2607 South Mae, going from R1 to C3. Councilwoman Hammond, no one has signed up to speak.
Yes, this is just a rezone to a commercial zoning, and I will move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11D is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 1,000 Northwest 164th Street, going from PUD 1289 to C3. Councilwoman Nice, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, and, and this is to basically permit a car wash facility, which is compatible with the, the area, so I will move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Councilwoman Greenwell, have you had a chance to vote? Passes unanimously. Item 11E is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 12852 Northwest 10th, going from AA to SPOD 1461. Councilwoman Young, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Seeing no protests, I'll move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11F is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 9501 Southwestern, going from R1 to SPOD 1463. Councilwoman Greenwell, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to allow the applicant, though, to make a presentation. This is a unique development, and one that I think has tremendous potential to address some problems that not only here in South Oklahoma City in Ward Five are experiencing, but throughout the city. So, Ms. Carpenter, would you please?
Sure. Amanda Carpenter, 522 Culcore Drive, on behalf of the applicant. This is a spud to provide for development of youth housing services and social services. It's a group effort with the Moore School District, with Bridges and Sparrows, as well as Richard McCowen as the developer. It is the expansion of facilities at Sky Ranch Elementary to provide up to 45 transitional two-family homes for homeless and displaced young adults. It will provide for multifamily, or for the double duplex housing, for a temporary transitional housing for students who are finding themselves in a place where they may be homeless or experiencing difficulties, but not eligible for other programs. Richard McCowen is the developer, and I'm going to turn it over to him to give you some more information about Bridges and the other programs that are present.
Richard McCowen, 30, Northeast 2nd Street, Oklahoma City. Richard McCowen, thirty, Northeast Second Street, Oklahoma City. This is really an exciting project to get to work on. Bridges is a great organization. It's been around for quite some time in Norman. The problem of kids going through high school, trying to complete their education without housing stability, is an overwhelming phenomenon today. It's something we don't think about. We've been here before, working on a similar project with Pivot here in Oklahoma City, formerly Youth Services for Oklahoma County. And Bridges has been in Norman, I believe, over twenty-five years, operating a small apartment community there, taking care of kids. And what's happened over the last several years is there has...there's nothing like this in more public schools to meet the same need. And there's estimated roughly sixty kids that are housing insecure at some level. I've known one of these kids personally, who's today in college on a wrestling scholarship, and really through no fault of his own, he found himself living out of his car. It's tragic that that happens. This is a slight variation on the tiny home theme that we've been working on with Pivot. We've taken the tiny homes and coupled them together to make a more substantial piece of architecture. So each one of these little duplexes is going to be about eight hundred square feet. These actually have individual bedrooms, slightly different than the studio styles buildings that we've been building for Pivot. They're really going to be cute. Each one's got a different elevation. We've been working on the architecture quite a bit at Ideal Homes, and we're really excited about the contribution to the community. And anyway, happy to answer any other questions, but appreciate your support on this.
Richard, thank you. This is somewhat unique in that the school district, Moore School District, and I believe also the Moore Public Foundation, is participants in this effort. And Superintendent Romine, I know you're present here today. Would you please just share a few comments that you may have concerning the school districts involved in this, which, to tell you the truth, I think adds a lot of confidence, from my standpoint, in the success of this endeavor.
Thank you very much for having me and allowing me to speak, and I'll be brief. As you mentioned, Mr. Greenwell, Moore Public Schools has a longstanding history of taking care of not only their community. We've been through a lot over the last ten years. And so we are very much focused on the academics of students, the mental health of students, and unfortunately, we are now focused on our homeless population of students. So, looking at the Bridges program in Norman, which is very well-established, is the same program that will come into Moore. They currently have a hundred percent of their students that have a plan for themselves after they graduate from high school. And to watch and see our students who are facing what we call couch surfing, and not knowing where they're going to end up, having a place to lay their heads at night is a significant issue. And so thus far, we've had really, really great success with working with the Bridges component out of Norman, and it is time for more public schools to take care of their own, and that's what we're willing to do. Fortunately for us, we are all in, as far as the school district. You mentioned Moore Public Schools Foundation. I'm happy to say that we have a district initiative that we do every year, and our students at Moore Public Schools raised well over three hundred thousand dollars last year to help fund this project. So we're in this for the long haul, and we're not going anywhere. And it is unique. It is going to be on district property. We have leased that land to the foundation, and so we have our hands in this, as far as the Bridges component is concerned. We also...we haven't talked a whole lot about the Sparrow Initiative, but that is a group of mostly past students from more public schools, young adults, that don't necessarily have a place when they graduate from high school. They typically hit a brick wall. And so this is an effort to do things for our intellectually disabled population, as well as get them, some of those individuals, ready for jobs and moving into the workforce. So very excited about both components.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate your presence here and your comments. The Moore Public Schools' relationship with residents in Ward Five is extremely close, and they cover, or they serve, ninety-plus percent of Ward Five in terms of public education. And the community very much supports the Moore Public School system, and we appreciate all the efforts you and your staff have worked towards in all aspects of public education. However, as you may suspect, residents close to this project have voiced some concern, but we've gone through those in discussions with Richard and Ms. Carpenter, and I'm sure you're fully supportive of it, supportive of the effort. And so I do want to address those concerns. The fact that more public schools is a participant in this project, like I said earlier, provides me with great confidence, just because I'm not as familiar with Bridges as others may be. So I think this will be very successful. I know everyone involved will do a great job in supporting the students who utilize this facility, and keep it in a manner that's attractive, you know, to the neighborhood. When I first heard about this last week, I drove up and down Western, not realizing it was behind Sky Ranch, and it's a perfect setting for this. It truly is. And all I can say is, if we could see more efforts in this area, I think that would have a tremendous impact on the homeless situation that we currently are facing with. So I get tremendous number of calls and complaints about homeless issues, and yet here's a project that's actively addressing that. You know, we'd rather see these young people have a little bit of assistance and have a successful future, do well financially, get great jobs, pay a lot of taxes. That's what we like to see. That's the American dream. And so I appreciate everyone's effort in this, and I wholeheartedly support this proposal. So I'd like to make the recommendation, Mayor, to approve this.
Councilman, can I ask a question? Or I don't know who might know this. I'm unfamiliar with the Bridges program. I was just pulling up here. Are we allowed to ask about the total cost, like how much it costs, what the investment looks like? Because I'm just curious. As you know, this is a subject near and dear to my heart.
Sure, we have Stacy Bridges, or excuse me, Stacy Bruce here from Bridges that can talk a little bit more about what the program is.
Thank you.
I'm Stacy Bruce. I'm the executive director at Bridges. I believe your question was on the total cost of building this project?
Yes, and then I would follow up...well, I'll have a follow-up.
Okay, so I think right now, we're looking at two and a half, three million total costs to build. But our program, I just want to give you guys a little rundown. Our mission is empowering high school students in family crisis to pursue education without obstacles. And I don't know how to break generational poverty cycles, cycles of abuse and all that without including education. And that's why we do what we do. We are high barrier because we have the education piece. We are not just a group home. They have to be enrolled in or eligible to enroll in high school. We check attendance, and they have to pass their classes to live with us. We have two adult resident advisors that live on property and would live on property also in Moore. They get a weekly apartment inspection, and they get nightly curfew checks. So we really do control our property. We make sure that we stay clean and that we're good neighbors to everybody else. And unlike my first day of work of six, seven years ago, a student said to me, "We think people think we're bad kids." And he thinks that people think that he did something wrong. The student that said that aged out of foster care and could no longer stay in the home that he was in, so he became homeless. So I tell people, if he did something wrong, it was that he had a birthday, right? So we see students that have incarcerated parents, deceased parents, homeless parents themselves. So I just want to make sure that you guys know what kind of students we are housing. They are committed. Dr. Romine's mentioned, we have a hundred percent participation or plan after high school. We used to report that eighty-six percent of our students go on to higher education, and I felt like it left out the fourteen percent that enlist in the military or start a career. So we want to make sure that you know we work with our students on career paths and helping them beyond the transitional living piece of Bridges.
So then there are...there's a support...there's a support system on site for the students to make sure they're doing the different homework and these sorts of things?
Right, yeah, so we'll have staff that are there during the day, but we have resident advisors that live there as well. And so they're on our after hours, like six PM to six AM.
Interesting. And weekends?
They're there for weekends, too, yes.
Summers, winter breaks?
Yep, staff works. We work a normal work schedule. We're not...we don't work like school schedules. We don't have summers off, so there'll be like a director on site, and then we have social service staff as well.
And then you all receive funding through like the United Way, and I'm guessing...
Yeah, in Norman, we're United Way-funded and heavily supported by our community.
That's great, okay. Two point five million, and how many homes are going to be there again?
That would be like phase one, getting us started with about twenty units, twenty total units.
I will have more to say at a later date, but just for now, just thank you for this work. Well, I will add, when I've been talking with residents at the doors, you know, I think, tell that kid that there are people out there like yourself and like me who know better. And I think that's the majority of at least the people I've talked to. But I think the stigma we're going to have to overcome, because I definitely talked to someone the other day at the doors, and they just have this completely one-eighty...they do think our kids are bad. They think they're bad, and they think we...I mean, like morally, I mean the word "bad." And they think that the only resolution is discipline, and that we're not disciplining our kids enough. And this person seemed shocked when I told them we are number one in incarcerating human beings as a state. And I was like, I think discipline has been the main course of action, and maybe we really need to rethink things. And so I just can't thank you enough for the word you prioritized, "education." And I think we've got a poor sense of purpose into our kids, and it's just so missing. So this project excites me, and I would love to know what we could do to do more of it in our city. I taught right down the road from here, Jefferson, from where you're doing this, though it's OKCPS. This is just something that I know our kids are experiencing, and they tell me about it all the time. So just thank you.
Thank you.
And if you don't mind, I'm sorry, I just wanted to say, I think the collab...I know the collaboration and the commitment for more public schools to be invested in this type of project, especially for their land to be used for this project, sets precedence of what can and should happen for said properties that are also within Oklahoma City Public School District. And the fact that, as we heard Mr. McCowen talk about Pivot, there are vast differences because that was privately raised dollars, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. McCowen, for them to get that project done, whereas you all have that investment of the school district and Bridges. So kudos to you all for what you're doing, because just listening to it, it makes me very excited for these young people that will be housed in this area.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Greenwell, I believe you wanted to move this, correct?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Item eleven G is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at nine-hundred Northwest Forty-Fifth, going from R one to S P U D one-four-six-seven. Councilman Cooper, no one has signed up to speak.
No one signed up to speak, but is there anyone here who is representing the applicant by any chance? Yeah, it looks like it, maybe?
My name's Charles Allen with Allen Engineering. I think we spoke last week.
We did speak, yes. Would you mind just kind of briefly telling us a little bit about this project, and we'll move from there? Thank you.
Sure. This is the owner, Lacey Crouch, isn't able to be here. She's on vacation still. She owns this property and lives in nine-hundred Northwest Forty-Fifth Street. She's looking to divide this to be able to build a second residence on the south part of the property. She'll be...well, when that's finished, she'll be moving into it and renovating the existing house at nine-hundred. She also has plans to move her father in with her, and possibly eventually sell it off. I'm not sure if that's not her long-term...I mean, that's her short term, is to renovate and live in it and have her father move in with her.
Thank you, and it was nice to hear just those future plans on the phone and then again in public, because, you know, just up the road, I've definitely had some residents express concerns about some developers, you know, purchasing these historic homes and tearing them down and building something else instead of that rehab process. And so I really applaud you all for, you know, stewarding this property. I really do. So with that, I would just move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Passes unanimously. All right. Item eleven H is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at twenty-one thirty-three Southwest Eleventh, going from R four Encenic River Overlay to S P U D fourteen-six-eight Encenic River Overlay. Councilwoman Hammond, no one has signed up to speak.
Is the applicant present? Yeah, I just want to...I know Catholic Charities does a lot of really great work in our community, so I just wanted...wondered if you could share a little bit about this project and just make sure folks know what is coming. I think it's a great opportunity for the area.
Good morning. Mark Grobes, eighteen-hundred South Sarah Road, on behalf of the applicant. This is at the southeast corner of Youngs and Southwest Tenth. The property currently operates as a women's development center, but is not permitted in R four. That will be removed, and a new women's development center will be rebuilt in its place, clean it up, be really nice, be a good project. It was approved by S.Rod and it was approved by Planning Commission. Staff recommends approval, and we'd asked for your approval.
Yeah, it is a...the existing structure is really beautiful, so I'm excited to see it kind of get a little spruced up, because it could use some love, and I think it'll be a great, yeah, improvement for the area. So I will move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item eleven I is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at one-five-four-four Northeast Twenty-Ninth Street, going from R one with HNO overlay to S P U D one-four-six-nine with HNO overlay. Councilwoman Nice, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you. With this, I know we do have a representative for the applicant, but this is to permit two single-family residences on this property, which is going to be something that we would like to see as far as this community is related. So with that, I will move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item J is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval. Item J is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval to close a portion of Klassen Boulevard between Block 10 of the Klassens Marquette Edition and Block 11 of the amended Klassens Marquette Edition, south of 11th and east of Dewey. Councilwoman Hammond, no one has signed up to speak.
Yeah, can we have the applicant come and just speak to this? I know there's been some articles in the news about this, and, but it is a change for the area that I think is really interesting and positive, but just want to make sure everyone on council especially knows what the, what will be happening, and for the public to kind of know what is on its way.
Sure. Amanda Carpenter, 522 Coalclaw Drive, on behalf of the applicant. This is closing Klassen Drive between 10th and 11th. This would create a pedestrian experience, which is not present in Midtown at this point in time. The traffic counts on this area of Klassen are relatively low, and it's a somewhat odd intersection. So this will create, we believe, alleviate some of the confusion in that area and allow for us to have that unique pedestrian experience. It will still be open to bicycles. It was recommended for approval by staff with two TEs, which we have agreed to. The first being that prior to council consideration, the applicant will provide a topographic survey showing the location of the utilities and dimensions within the proposed closure area, which has been provided. And the second is a bike pedestrian easement at least 20 feet in width shall be provided along the existing street alignment. So that's to ensure that both bicycle and pedestrians are still able to use this area. The application was heard by DDRC and approved unanimously, and the Planning Commission also approved this item with the verbal commitment that in the journal entry, we will make a stipulation that the area will remain open for the public to use as both a pedestrian and bicycle throughway. I'm happy to answer any other questions, and we ask for your approval today.
I don't have any questions. If anyone else does, I'm happy to hear those, but if not, I will move for approval.
I do. Okay. On both sides, and maybe I just missed it, I'm sorry, but on the, at the roundabout, and then again coming from the northwest, what will there be, like, bollards or what? I'm just thinking design-wise that tells, that signals to the person in a vehicle, well, quite frankly, even a pedestrian or someone on a bike, that this areas exist for what you just described?
Sure. We have Mark Zitzau here, who can speak to the design of the area.
Good morning. Mark Zitzau with 1 East Sheridan Avenue. So that's a great question.
Wow.
We are currently working through designs. There's a building immediately south where the old Emsa Building was. That building is going to be called the Klassen Marquette Building, and that was recently approved through DDRC. So what we're looking on the, at the end caps of this is going to be some sort of mountable curb. The bike and ped easement is going to share the fire lane easement, so that emergency vehicles can still go through when necessary. So what we'll likely see will be planters and/or bollards that are going to act as separators on either side of that 20-foot easement with a mountable curb. We're still working out the final design on the 10th Street Roundabout, because what's going to likely happen is traffic in and out of the parking lot for the Plaza Court Building is going to be rerouted to be one-way. We have some of those plans. We'd be happy to share those with you. I think that'll kind of clear up the issue, but ultimately it'll mean new curb at both ends of the roundabout, mountable, so that the bikes can still move through easily without having to traverse in or out of pedestrian ramps.
Yeah, I would love to see those designs. Super love to see them, because during the pandemic, I discovered this route from the Paseo as a bike route to Scissor Tell. Like, this whole stretch of Klassen for me is truly one of the most beautiful parts of our city. And I've long thought about it, taking on this sort of approach. So I'd like to learn from you all about the reconfiguration, because I'd like to see this hopefully become an example for at least other parts of the urban core in Ward 2, and I can't speak for the other parts of the urban core, but I know there, I know, and I know you know, Mark, that there are residents in parts of Ward 2 who want to see things just like this. And then I will also say this, because I think sometimes people mishear me when I advocate for pedestrian and bike infrastructure. This is a route that not only do I bike, but I drive walker pretty regularly. And I just want to remind everybody that when we talk about bike and pedestrian, that we're really also talking about an all-of-the-above approach to transportation, where someone could hop on a train, a bus, they're in their car or by foot. And I just think that we lose a lot when we pit these things against one another. So I just want to say that as well. So, thank you.
All right. Do you wish to make a motion? We've got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right. 11K is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval to close all of the 20-foot east-west alley in Block 2 of the Edwards Courthouse Edition, south of West Reno and east of South Lee at 626 West Reno. Councilwoman Hammond, no one has signed up to speak.
Yeah, this was recommended by Planning Commission and recommended by staff for approval, so I will move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Councilman Greenwell, if you had a chance to vote. Passes unanimously. All right. 11L is an ordinance on final hearing. This was recommended for denial by the Planning Commission. This is a rezoning of 1228 Southwest 149th Street, going from AA to SPD 1440. Councilman Greenwell, one person has signed up to speak in opposition. Okay. Is the applicant here? Could, would you please make a presentation as to what you have planned?
Hi, my name is Jordan Vanover, 15205 Stone Meadows Drive. I am one of the applicants in this. The engineer is surveying land today, and he's been on vacation for the last two weeks. So I have my presentation for you guys. I wasn't able to make the city council meeting, or sorry, the planning meeting. I think that's why they were here. So what we're proposing is building a fitness facility that is going to be a multipurpose facility. So basically, what it's going to do is, is create personal training and group classes for people in the area, but also do things like leagues, like basketball leagues, volleyball leagues for kids, things like that, that we can run out there, as well as pickleball courts on the weekends for people to do something active on the weekends in that area. So what I did was, is I put together this business plan for a while ago. I want to let you guys know just the reasons why I want to do these things, because obviously, in the economy we're in, we want to make sure it makes sense. So we acquired the land to definitely develop it. We want to develop something for the city that's beneficial for us and the city. This is one of the proposals we have for this. So the biggest issue I think we had with even the planning was being able to allow alcohol in the weekends for pickleball, which we are more than happy to get rid of that. But that was in the business plan. So the reason why is because if we had a beer at a cost of $6, a profit of $220, or at a cost of $6, it costs, our buy price of $6 costs us $220, our profit's $460. If we did wine, it costs us $8. $210 was our real cost, $4.70 was our profit. If we have a food truck out there, which we have connections with, we could bake about $1,500 a month. That's estimated about $4,000 a month, just with the alcohol and food truck sales. We're more than happy to abolish that, to be good neighbors, to be people that they feel like that's going to be an issue. We're okay with that. We applied to have like a restaurant style thing inside the gym for this reason. If we did healthy meals, we would charge $9. It would cost us $1.30 to make with a profit of $8.70. If we sold five of those at six operational days, we'd estimate about $1,200 of profit in that month. If we did protein shakes, things like of that nature, healthy shakes and smoothies, it would cost, we'd charge about $7 for them. Our cost would be $110. We'd profit $6.90. Five days at six operational days, it's about another $800. So that's $2,000 of the profit just inside the food and drinks in the actual facility. So if we were to abolish that, that'd be, you know, something, if we took the alcohol out, now we're losing $6,000. The pickleball and volleyball courts are a big one for us, because it's a huge potential for profit. The only thing that exists similar to that would be chicken and pickle, which is 30, 40-minute drive from that location. If we did $40 per hour at five courts with six operational hours in the weekend, it's 200 per hour with a max of 1,000 per night. That's $8,000 per month, just in pickleball courts. So we asked for additional hours on the weekend to be able to operate that. They didn't like that idea. The only reason why we asked for those extra hours on the weekend is so we could make that extra money in those operational hours. If we did basketball leagues, we do them four times a year, eight-week seasons. You have 10 to 12 teams at 650 a team. Your season revenue is going to be about $7,800. That's going to be $31,000 a year, or $3100 a month in estimated profit from the basketball leagues. That's why that's important to us. The actual gym business itself in my model, this is what I've been doing for nearly a decade. We need about 200 members at an average of $180 a month. That is $36,000 a month, and that is the biggest revenue we're going to have inside of that. So I don't think you guys had a problem with the actual gym operational business. Also, in our business plan, I'm in contact with a friend of mine that owns a nutrition shop. We want to sublet out that inside of there through a nutrition shop. He's estimated to pay $2,500 monthly. That will help us with that as well. I also have a connection with a chiropractor that we'd like to put in there. That would be $2,500 a month. So we want those people in there, so it's a complete fitness facility, not just like a one-stop shop. So if you had back problems or things like that, we'd want the chiropractor to be able to help. If we had nutritional needs, which people that go into fitness need protein supplements, things like that, we want that to be available on the premises as well. It also helps us with the fiscal responsibility of the premises. The gym rentals itself, so there's a big need for kids that play footsaw. It's an indoor soccer that there's not a lot of places for. Kids that are in recreational leagues to be able to rent out facilities, there's not a lot of gyms to rent out in that area besides the station. We would charge $100 per hour, six hours at five operational days would give us another $3,000 a week, which would roughly be around $9,900 or $10,000 monthly. So that's important to us. So really, with the whole business broke down, I just did, I break down it for you guys. We'd be looking to make, on the low side, $40,000 a month, and the high side, $80,000 a month in that business. So that's going to give us a gross profit of $480,000, or $960,000, with our costs being anywhere between $150,000 to $300,000, with a net of low side $200,000, high side $660,000 to $700,000 a month. So the reason why we wanted those things, all those things in there, and I didn't want to get those taken out, was for that reason, so we could be profitable, so we could make a good business. That being said, I hope that we can do this. I hope that we can develop this land. I hope that we can do something with this land that's beneficial for both us and the city. But we have acquired the land, and we do want to work with the city to develop something in this area. So I hope it's this, but we have Plan B, C, and E.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. Any questions for the applicant?
I guess the one thing I'd say is, you said they didn't like that idea. Who's "they"? Is that the Planning Commission?
The Planning Commission.
Is that neighbors?
The neighbors, the Planning Commission, specifically Matt Hinkle, with the Planning Commission, didn't like the alcohol or the tournaments.
I see we have some neighbors here. Did any of them sign up to speak? I'm just curious before I ask some more questions.
We have one person who signed up to speak.
Okay, I'll wait.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Do we want to hear from that person?
Yes, please.
Okay. Janice Knight?
Hello, my name is Janice Knight. My address is 1309 Southwest 149th Street. We, our traffic on 149th is terrible. From about 4:30 to 5:00 Thursday and Friday afternoon, the traffic is backed up from Western to Penn, probably about a half a mile to three-fourths of a mile. There was a couple of nights, it was backed up clear to Western. It's nonstop. It wasn't so much, it was the alcohol. At first, he wasn't going to have any tournaments. He's changed the issue of that. He's going to have basketball. He's going to have soccer. He's going to have pickleball tournaments, and wants to have it till midnight on weekends. And he didn't have but 40 parking spots at first. Now it's 80. When you let that out at midnight, the traffic is going to be unreal. The alcohol, he has changed so many things. When he first started, he was going to do this. Now he's going to do that. Now he's going to undo the alcohol. You can't, he changes too much. None of the neighbors in the area want it. You've got Maps Project on Western that's going to be open. It's going to have pickleball. It's going to have a walking track. It's going to have all the facilities that he's going to offer. I know someone said, well, it's for 50 years and older. We don't need a bunch of kids out there at midnight peeling out, not supervised. I just, it's not a good place for it. It's a rural area. There's no additions on 149th Street. There's maybe seven houses on the north side of 149th. On the south side, there's nine houses. That's from Western to Penn. We're just against it, and I hope you vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Councilwoman Nice, would you like to ask some additional questions?
Yes. I guess my main question is, has the developer talked to the neighbors? Have y'all had like a meeting, a meeting of the minds? And I'm just curious how many, because it just seems like all of these conversations are so separated as far as what my ears hear, and I could be totally wrong as far as what I'm hearing. Just one meeting?
We tried to have multiple meetings, and it's one meeting that didn't show up.
Okay, okay, okay. That's my main question. It seems like there's been a lack of communication as far as, to my ears, of what the expectation is. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate the presentation, and I hope you are successful in your endeavor. However, I just don't believe this is the appropriate proposal for this area. Some of the ideas that you have presented have demonstrated to be very successful in different parts of the city, and perhaps somewhere closer to, say, I-35 would be more appropriate. I know the cost of land increases as you get closer to a main arterial, like an interstate highway. But I've not received anything but negative comments from the people in the area, and that's been several months in comments. I know the Planning Commissioner for Ward 5 has performed a lot of analysis, speaking with various members, and when the Planning Commission unanimously denies an application, there's a good reason for it. And I'm going to follow their recommendation and move for denial of the application. Yes, sir, please, come up.
That, I completely understand. Thank you, guys, for the opportunity. I appreciate it. I will find something that fits for this land. I've got some good ideas for unidentified agricultural land. So I've got some good ideas for it. I appreciate you guys' consideration. Thank you so much, and I will work with you in the future, I promise.
Well, thank you. And again, good luck, and I hope you can find something that everyone can agree upon. And I really do appreciate your initiative and plans for future opportunities. So thank you again.
Yes, sir. We'll find some land that fits this one, but I've got something that fits this one better.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And to the residents, thank you for all of your comments. I know I've had a lot of, well, I've had several conversations with several of the residents, but I know Matt Hinkle, our commissioner for Ward 5 on the Planning Commission, has had even more conversations with you. So thank you for your input, and at this point, I'm going to move for denial.
Okay, so the motion is to deny, which means, well, when we get there, I'll explain, but first we need a motion and a second.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Okay, so your yes vote will be to deny the application. Cast your votes. Denial passes unanimously. All right. 11M is a All right, 11M is a public hearing regarding the Adventure District, Business Improvement District, City of OKC Improvement and Special Services Assessment District Number 9, and it looks like they probably want to speak here, I'm guessing. Okay, so we do have someone who signed up to speak, and that is Calvin Moser, under this public hearing. Is Calvin here?
Good morning. My name is Calvin Moser. I am the owner of the property at 1127 Northeast 63rd. And a concern I have is the property that I own was once owned by a state senator, Claude Briggs, and my father rebuilt the home after they had a fire in it and bought the property and rebuilt it. The property has beautiful view. It sits on a high place, and we can view the Capitol, and we can also see the planes fly in and out of Will Rogers. So I'm concerned about what the zoning change or what changing we're making in regard to the question in hand, and I don't know all the answers to that, so that's the reason I came up and asked, because I certainly don't want the values of that particular home demolished. It was built in 1924, and the two by fours in the house were six-by-six stud oak. So the walls are 18 inches thick wrong. It's a real chore to keep that structure beautiful. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Someone who can address that?
Yeah, Jeff Lutter, planning director. The, this particular property...
It's just Mike on the...
...district to help the area, and what this would do is assess various properties in the area so that they, that certain things can be paid for, maintenance and so forth. So your property, your residential property, would be assessed $0. So it's not a rezone, it's just simply an assessment district. So it would not have an impact financially on the property. It would just be able to be something that helps the area generally kind of reach its potential, which is the, kind of the point of these business improvement districts. So happy to answer any other questions, but it would be a $0 assessment for your property.
And if I may, Mr. Moser, I would encourage you to be in contact with our Adventure District. We have an executive director who's behind you, as well as some other executive membership for the district that can educate you a little better as far as what the Adventure District is and how you, as a resident owner of the property, can be a part and contribute in whichever way you feel fit to the Adventure District, okay? Thank you for being here.
Okay, well, that was the only person who signed up to speak under the public hearing, so we can close that now and proceed to M2, the resolution adopting and confirming an assessment role for year 2022, 2023 for the Adventure District Business Improvement District. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11N is an ordinance on final hearing adopting and setting the assessment role for year 2022, 2023 for the Adventure District Business Improvement District. You could take a motion on that. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes.
My computer is stolen out, but I will vote yes.
Okay. Passes unanimously. All right, 11O is an ordinance to be introduced, set for public hearing on January 17th and potential final hearing on January 31st. This relates to sewers and sewage disposal, and we have a brief presentation on this.
Chris Browning, our utilities director, will give us an overview of the proposed changes.
Good morning. This item includes recommended changes to three chapters in city ordinance, Chapter 47, 55, and 60. In 47, the first revision is reinstating sections that were inadvertently removed in May of 2021 relative to waste haulers. The second set of revisions adds sections to permit those waste haulers, and currently the haulers are licensed by ODEQ, but they will be permitted by the city to do business in the city, and currently, there are only 15 waste haulers doing business in the city of Oklahoma City. Then the third set of revisions would align language with the ordinance and the environmental protection agency's definitions for industrial, and that's generally manufacturing, and then commercial, that would be food preparation operations. And then Chapter 55 recommends updates to include the addition of multifamily definition and clarification of housekeeping units. And then in 60, generally, that's to do two things. One is to include reciprocal updates from Chapter 47 related to taxable and tax-exempt service fees, and then secondly, reestablishes the meter multiplier, which was inadvertently removed, and that's relative to system development charges, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Chris?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so today would be introduction of what Chris has just described. Do we wish to pursue that? There is a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. The item has been introduced, set for public hearing in two weeks and a potential final hearing two weeks after that. All right, 11P1 is the public hearing regarding the unsecured structures here listed, except for those previously struck. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, and so we can proceed to the resolution found in 11P2 declaring that the structures are unsecured, except for those previously struck. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Oh, sorry.
I'm one of the property owners on this list and the abandonment. May I address the council?
On abandonment?
Public hearing P. I own the property at PH and Q...
You're 1017 Northwest 10th?
That's it.
Okay. We're in the middle of the vote, so it's a little bit awkward. I wish you had signed up. We have these yellow slips out. That's what I asked Amy about, but why don't we hold the vote and if you wouldn't mind speaking?
Yes, good morning. Appreciate you giving me the opportunity. My name is Bill Fisher, and I own the entity that owns this property, and I have been pummeled by the homeless here for most of going on a year. I have a crew on the property at least twice a week, not only cleaning the property up but securing the buildings. I work with the police department. I participated in the anti-graffiti program, and the folks are using power tools to gain access to the buildings. Now, what I've done to address the issue is, I have paid to have the buildings remediated, and I have applied for a demolition permit to take the property down. So these might be pictures from the 27th, but I had a crew there on Tuesday morning resecuring the property. So I've tried to do what I can. The only solution at this point, I've worked with the police, I put up trespassing signs, we call the police, they do run the people out, but they don't do anything substantive. So the solution is to allow me to proceed with demolishing the property. I do want to point out that there is a feature on the corner there that you all have, the community considers to be historic, that will be left up. I know there's been some concerns about the demolition application, and so the building's neither abandoned nor is, the owner is certainly making every effort to secure it. So with the cold weather and everything, I guess the homeless are just, have no other place to go but to break into the... We put the walls and the boarding up in a sufficient manner that they've had to remove brick in order to get access into the building. So I'd appreciate it if you would give me a pass on both the abandonment and the unsecured structures, so I can have the opportunity to get the property demolished. In the interim, I will consider, continue to have a crew there at least twice a week, resecuring the buildings and making sure the site is clean. Thank you.
Okay, so what's the response to this?
Yeah, Chad Davidson, code enforcement superintendent, is the structures, are they secured currently?
They were secured as of the Tuesday inspection, and I understood there would be a reinspection on Tuesday. I had a crew there starting at 8:00 in the morning until 2:00 in the afternoon securing the buildings.
Last Tuesday. That opening right there, if I'm not mistaken, I was by there, it was either late that day on Tuesday or early Wednesday, and it was still open.
Again, it's, you know, the, well, again, one door open in three buildings, and it's clear I secured it, and you can see the broken, you can see where they've torn off the piece of wood that was used to secure the building. So again, you know, I'm the property owner, I'm certainly responsible for it, but I'm a victim of vandals and trespassing folks. I pay weekly to have the building re-secured, so...
All right, is there something we can do to help him and work with him on this?
I mean, we have time with this, even with the, even if this went through here, we would still have time to work with them on this, to make sure they had time to get their construction done, or you could defer the item and be an option.
Yeah, I know that we've had issues like this before where even if we approve this, you have, is it 30 days before the city would do?
For unsecured, we like to get them boarded within about a week or so.
A week, okay. But he can still work with you. If you're working on securing it, we can go ahead with that. I do prefer to leave it on here just in case, but, because I know it's on also the abandoned, and maybe we can look at deferring that, but I think on the unsecured, we can leave it, and then you all can work outside the meeting to court make.
And Chad can get his information too, so you can contact him directly, and if you stay in contact with them with the work you're doing...
Yeah, I'm in touch with Andrew Jones is my inspector, and I've been in touch with him, so... And I think you can see from there, I've secured the buildings, there's no trespassing signs up. I even built a wall because there's a, two buildings come close together and had an overhang, so literally, we had people there with tents. So I built a wall to prevent anybody from being in that area. They took a chainsaw last week and cut a hole in it to gain access, so, you know, I'm doing what I can, and I appreciate the opportunity to be heard.
I just have a quick question. Which part, I'm looking at a picture of it on Google Maps, which part is historic that you were referring to, this property? Did you say that? That there was a historic piece of this property?
There is a, there's a, at the very corner of that intersection, there's a facade that has a little metal awning overhang. I don't think you can see it in this picture.
Are you referencing at Tenth and Classen?
You all rezoned this property for independent senior living in a joint venture with the Oklahoma City Housing Authority.
Yes.
And part of the agreement with the neighbors was to preserve that corner, so I am telling you, I am aware that needs to be preserved, even though I'll be demolishing the rest of the building, so...
Perfect, thank you.
And by the way, it would already be done, but remediate, these buildings are old, so it required environmental remediation. You all staff have to review the reports and approve them. That has been done, and I believe my demolition permit is either pending or approved.
Okay, so it sounds like the desire is to move forward with the vote that we already have currently open right now, and so we will do so. So I think everybody's probably just voted at this point. Have they? Councilman Stone cipher, have you voted? All right, passes unanimously. Technically, at the time of the real vote, Councilman Carter was not longer in the room, but he had voted before he left. Little bit of, not seen that one before, but I guess. Okay, so that was the resolution found at 11P2. Now we're at 11Q1, the public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings, and Councilwoman Hammond, obviously, we have Item D there that was just addressed. Did you wish to do anything with that?
Yeah, I'd like to just defer that for two weeks, just so we can stay in some conversation with the owner and code enforcement and then revisit. It's sort of out of turn, Joy, to not have signed up ahead of time, so, but we can talk afterwards if you have any concerns.
Our preference is to leave it on. If he does secure it, of course, we'll be able to administratively close both cases, you know, by the end of the week, if that helps.
Can you remind me though, because the abandoned is, declares it so that if there are like public responses, that becomes a lien, correct?
If I'm not mistaken, this property's burned a few times, correct?
I believe the only fire that we have encountered was inside the building set by a homeless person trying to stay warm. I don't believe the buildings have like had a fire that's required, you know, a major response.
What happens if he isn't able to get a demolition crew out there by, within 30 days?
I don't expect him to be able to get one out there by, in 30 days. We would like to have it secured, of course, to keep people out of it, to keep from, you know, anyone being harmed. Do you have a contractor yet for demolition?
I have a contractor identified. I have not signed a contract for the demolition yet. It's about $100,000.
Yeah, it takes a little while for that. They'll have to get some shut offs and secure a permit and things of that nature, so that's going to be more than a 30-day process, I can assure you of that.
And it's going to be a little more complicated, because I have to make sure we secure and preserve that corner structure.
We're definitely willing to work with you as far as bringing the buildings down, but having them secured is very, very much a big thing for us.
I think the code enforcement person would be telling you that these buildings have been secured, re-secured over and over and over again, and we're just, you know, we're victim of a crime. Again, we'll take responsibility for it, but we're, the property's certainly not abandoned, and we will continue to secure the structures as best we can. If code enforcement has a recommendation on how to do it permanently, we would be happy to do it other than demolition. Thank you.
I think I'd like, I would like to defer, just to, like I said, stay in contact over the next two weeks and hear the process of the demolition permit and that process, because I think if we know that that's on its way, then obviously, the securing in the future is a non-issue, and so the other issues, I think, hopefully, will be abated. So I'd like to defer this for two weeks, and if, can you stop by the council office on your way out and also leave your contact information so we have it, because I'd just like to make sure we're all staying in contact in the meantime? That'd be great.
Okay, so the motion will be to defer Item 11Q1D for two weeks to our next meeting. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item is deferred. Okay, no one else has signed up to speak under this public hearing, and so we can proceed to the resolution found at 11Q2, declaring that the buildings are abandoned, save for those previously struck or deferred. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, 11R is a public hearing regarding a resolution declaring approximately 4.5 acres of real property located near Northwest 115th and Western as surplus for park purposes. This is the second of three meetings on the sale of real estate. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak under the public hearing?
No, they haven't.
All right, so we'll close the public hearing and proceed to 11S, which is a resolution declaring that certain real property located within the Pasadena Heights addition, near Southeast Grand and Missouri, has surplus for park purposes. This is the third of three meetings on this topic. There's nothing left to say unless council member has any questions or comments, otherwise we could take a motion to adopt the resolution. We have a motion in a second. We have a motion in a second. Passes unanimously. All right, 11T is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust declaring a tract of real property of the proposed West Elm Creek reservoir, et cetera, as surplus to and abandoned for the water utility purpose. There was, I think, some discussion on this at the last meeting, this is the second of two meetings on this topic. If the council so desires, we could take a motion to adopt this joint resolution. We have a motion in a second. Passes unanimously. All right, 11U1 is a collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 123 for fiscal year 2022-2023. This would be retroactively effective to July 1st of 2022. Executive session is not requested, but I think, Mr. City Manager, you thought you might just say a few words about the agreement.
Sure, no, I just wanted to acknowledge the work of our negotiating team and the work with the FOP to try to get this agreement done and completed for our employees, and just appreciate all the work that was done, particularly in the efforts of identifying the issues with our recruit pay and trying to be more competitive in the metro area. And so, great work by all involved, and just thankful for the agreement being approved.
I just want to echo your comments, there were a lot of people that worked hard the last couple of weeks in December to get this done right before Christmas, and so my hat's off to them. I'm glad people kept talking and we came together, and we came up with a good solution. Thank you.
I'll just mention that as we look at this FOP contract, I want to also keep in mind the other bargaining agreements that we have in place, and the set offs, one, set asides that we have for FOP, I would expect that we continue to maintain the same, same work with our other bargaining, collective bargaining folks that also want to see these types of agreements and improvements with their set contracts.
I just think Mark, who was our council representative in the negotiations, and also just drive your point home, Mr. City Manager, this agreement, as well as the fire and ask-me agreements represent the largest raises by percentage in modern city history, and certainly, you know, there's a reason for that. We're in a highly competitive personnel environment, and specifically with this agreement with police, you know, we have in excess of 100 vacant positions that our voters approved in 2017, and they and we would like to see those filled, and though there's many elements to that effort, certainly salary is chief among them, and, what is it, a 24% increase?
For the recruit pay.
For recruit pay. I mean, that's not a typo, right? 24%, you know, and that's, that makes our recruit pay now competitive with any department in the state of Oklahoma, which is really important. So my gratitude to you and to the team for getting that done, and to the leadership at FOP.
Yeah, some of the folks from our negotiating team just stepped in and just want to acknowledge them and all their work, and then Tony Puckett as well with McAfee and Tapp and his work. I just appreciate everyone working together on this, and it really was a team effort to get it done. It's great work.
Any other comments, questions? All right, we can go ahead then, and as I said, executive session is not requested, so we could go ahead and take a motion on the agreement, found at 11U. We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, 11V is request to enter into executive session to receive confidential communications from our attorney concerning Department of Justice pattern or practice investigation. We can handle that at the end of our other business, but we can take the vote now to go into executive session. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. As I said, we'll handle that at the end of our other business. 11W is an executive session on advice of the municipal council to receive confidential communications concerning the case of Colby, Jones, and Wright. We can take a vote now to go into executive session. We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll handle that at the end of our other business. 11X1 is a claim recommended for approval. There's just one, and an executive session is not requested. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we're at item 12, comments from council, word one.
Yes, sir, thank you. I just want to start off by saying Happy New Year to everyone as well, and I wanted to give a shout out. A week and a half ago, we experienced some of the coldest weather that we've ever experienced in this state, and I'd like to say thank you to the City Rescue Mission, the Homeless Alliance, anything that they did to step up, but we also had some great people and some boots on the ground. Jody with Bendin' Knee, Delisa with Second Chance Thrift Stores, Jessica with Sandwiches of Love, and Ryan with Project Winter Watch in accordance with Victory Church, Church Under the Bridge, Crossings Church. Mark and I and some of his staff, we were able to put about 208 people in motel rooms to get them off the streets and keep them out of this weather, and just the experience that we had getting a lot of that taken care of, it was such an amazing collective effort to see everybody come together to help the unhoused, and I just wanted to say thank you so much to see Oklahoma City doing what they do best and coming together to work for each other, so that's all. Thank you.
Just a little personal privilege this morning, if you don't mind, today is my granddaughter Ruby's birthday. Happy birthday, Ruby. Mimi loves you, mind your mama. Congratulations to the FOP on a well-negotiated contract on both sides, so I'm really grateful and come work for Oklahoma City if you're not already, and if you are already here, we love you and appreciate you, be safe out there.
Thank you, word four. Word five. Word six. Word seven.
Yes, I want to mention, re-mention again, as far as those contracts, while I heard what was mentioned after I spoke, I want to continue to say, even with the agreements that we continue to have, we want to make sure and ensure that others are still receiving the same benefits when it comes to what we are agreeing to. So what I talked about during our consent docket, we talked about the Capital View neighborhood as far as their park is concerned, and I do want to mention, and I do have questions, and they can be addressed by our city manager after this meeting. They have located an area where they want to see this park located, so I do want more information on how we can ensure this property is obtained in the efforts for this neighborhood to have their park. I want to talk about Bricktown for a couple of reasons. Two, one, this is our premier area as far as our maps project for investment of specific downtown pieces of our city to bring that tourism and that attraction and all of these companies and all of the people from across the world, if you will, to experience what this, this entertainment district is supposed to be. There have been a few incidents continuously, you know, throughout the years, but most recently, I am very concerned about the crime as far as just the shootings, the safety, and also the concerns that we have as far as addressing parking in those that are unhoused, that are also in this same area. So this past weekend, I was able to, to walk at night and ride, ride the cruise and just experience lower Bricktown as well as upper pieces of Bricktown, and I personally was scared because of the safety and lack of lighting, and the fact that there were so many lights out in lower Bricktown, as well as along the canal itself, and the fact, again, as we looked at and continued to ride, there was a time where there were some young people above in one area that started throwing objects at the said boat that we were on. So again, me experiencing those things as the elected official for these areas, I cannot imagine what a lot of our folks are also experiencing, and that terrifies me. So there are a couple of things that I know we can do, and I would like to see our investment of this area, and I know that's going to take a few conversations, but one is how we ensure the safety for our youth because of the, some of the incidents that have occurred most recently involving those that are under 18. Two, lighting, as far as Bricktown in general, I know we're working on some, but some is not enough. There has to be a better commitment to this area in a long-term type of investment, reoccurring investment, to ensure that we're working on maintaining this area, and I'll also say, it was very sad to ride down the canal because there are a lot of vacant, empty buildings, so it's not as vibrant as we would want and need this same specific area to be, and that's very unfortunate. So there are quite a few working things I know that have to be discussed for that. So I wanted to address that, and hopefully we will start working on solutions and other solutions. I know we have some, but we need a collective plan as far as how we work on the Bricktown area, safety, and especially the lighting. And as we're talking about lighting, I know I have been asking for months for just two lights, two, and I'm still, have not received an update on those two lights in specific neighborhoods. And when we think in listening to the gentleman that spoke about the unsecured and abandoned property that spoke to that, lighting is the issue, lighting as far as these areas still being dark and access for folks. And as we had for the longest, my property with the Bryant Center, lighting there, we had an extreme issue as far as the safety is concerned with the lighting. So there are some lighting issues, and I'm still waiting for the update on my two lights that I've continuously asked for. They've been ready, just waiting on us to say yes, so we can get those lights intact. And one of those recipients that is in the area is a woman in her 90s, so the least we can do is help to accommodate this neighborhood for this, this senior. And I also wanted to mention, I've been attending the housing authority meetings the last couple of months, and the fact that we continue to talk about areas that are under their purview as far as their properties are concerned, and specifically Creston Park, that I've been waiting for an update as far as when we're going to see some movement, and now they're asking and wanting the city to bail them out and give them $2 million so they can fund their gap for this project. And I just want to mention that they did have funding, and they had to return funding back to the state as far as some funds, and I do not believe that as a city entity with what they did to themselves, that we should be the ones to bail them out of, out of this issue, because of the things that they have done as far as their tenants, as far as said property, and the miscommunication to the residents for this particular area in general, and the fact that, again, I have to, I'm answering the questions that I don't even have answers to for my residents, and that's very unfortunate, and it's, it's not fair to me to have to answer those questions when I didn't do that. I'm trying to figure out what the solution's going to be. So I'm going to continue to go to those meetings because clearly, as long as we have, they have the audience, which they barely have, I'm going to keep going to ensure and make sure that those properties are maintained in the way that our residents have asked for, and again, for the fact that they have some employee differences and issues as well. So I wanted to make sure that was, that was mentioned, and I'll continue to go and speak my truth to what I continue to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to thank Chief Gorley for providing me with some information on real-time information centers. Some people refer to them as real-time crime centers. It's a great tool that helps our officers get to the scene of the crime much quicker. There are currently 120 of these centers across the United States. None are fully operational in the state of Oklahoma at this time, and the chief was kind enough to let me, provide me with what Fort Worth has done with its budget and its real-time crime center. I have asked Brent Bryant to take a look at this, to look at what we're trying to implement and what Fort, Fort Worth has successfully implemented. We are going to have some additional briefings with the council, and I'd like to, at some point, come back to the council and talk about expanding this program in the near future. Again, thanks, Chief Gorley, for this. I think it's a great program, and to echo the mayor's comments where we are short on applicants and need to fill, you know, at least 100 positions, some would say more, this is a tool that helps our police force in the interim. Secondly, I'd like to mention our penalty reduction program. I try to mention it almost every other meeting, to remind people to clear your old warrants, get a, get a fresh start. We are now at $1.1 million in collections with over 9,000 cases closed, so this program's not going to be around forever, so please take advantage of it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We now have citizens to be heard. Joy Reardon?
Y'all are really going to be very unhappy with me. I tried to speak when the gentleman was up here on the Northwest 10th. He's saying that there wasn't a very bad fire response. The record, the old record studio had a three-alarm fire there. The daycare on the next block over has had a two-alarm fire. What I feel like is it's going to private development. That's where they promised us to have this, have our new building. We got a letter a week before Christmas telling us we're not getting it. We're not getting our new building. They put it on hold indefinitely. Let's ask some questions about that. And why would they send money back? Thank you. Why would they send money back that we need for housing? Our building is falling down! And I'm sick of getting bypassed, pushed off into the next, next bill, next time, and I ain't the only one. We've got major issues with the homeless population thinking that housing is, is the homeless shelters. It's not just in our building. It's happening in McGuire's, Jelts, Andrew Square's, Chertel Towers. The only places that it isn't happening, because they can't get the homeless in there, is Danforth, Redding, or Candle Lake, because they can't put them in there! And I'm getting sick of it! I'm tired of it! And I'm doing my best to keep the people calm over there. And I'm doing my best to keep the people calm over there, in our building. And I'm hearing from all these others, plus some outside sources that just can't, we can't take it anymore. They banned people, people keep coming back because they're scared to do criminal trespassing. When is something going to change? Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie Kirk.
My name is Ronnie Kirk. My address is 2328 North Missouri. I also come down here to speak for the homeless and the vets. Years ago, I worked veteran's administration. My father, he got his leg blown off. He could have been saved by one of you all's grandfather. You know, the vets, how can you drive down the street, see all these homeless people, and pick out which one is not a vet? They have such survival skills. You see them pushing stuff, got stuff? Sure, they accumulate stuff. They learn how to survive. Some of that stuff might keep them warm when it's zero degrees outside. They're not just all drug addicts. They're also down. They also need shelter. You know, years ago, they had Hamilton Court, 35 years ago, run by the Andersons. They taught, they gave me a job when I was 15 years old, picking up trash. They educated me so much, gave me 21 skills, 21. They also had a community center where they educated all the kids that lived on the property, all the kids, not just half of them, all the kids. You know, our Declaration of Independence, it says, "Take all your pursuit of happiness for all your citizens", not just some of them, all of them. So, we have to do things
30 seconds, please.
Yes, to take care of all our people, all of them. You know, they just down, they need help. We are the ones to help them, to take them into the future with us. You know, they just want a place to live, a homeless person, a veteran, something they can't do it for themselves no more. They just need help. And we had the best diverse of educated city council people in the state, a young mayor trying to take everybody into the future. A great city council members all want to help somebody. So, let's help these people. You know, reach out to some developers and tell them, "Don't just build an apartment complex for 10% of the people. Reach out and give us the developer that make a community for people." They can still do other projects, but having to build something for a whole community of people. You know, three weeks ago
Mr. Kirk, we're over time now. Is there any concluding statements you wish to make?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You know, they were going to build some tiny home, but people were worried so much about their property values coming down. Those were angels, losing their legs, their arms getting burned, hurt, burned out, disfigured. They were angels.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Kirk.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going into executive session now, and we will return.
All right, we have concluded our executive session and we have reached item 14 on the agenda which is adjournment and we are adjourned.